I'd like to call this meeting to the council of Village of Green Hills for May 2013 to order. Would you all please rise and join us in the national anthem? The pledge of allegiance is how I'm not singing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Been watching too many baseball games. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Adams.
Here.
Dries.
Here.
Holter.
Here.
Hermes.
Here.
Walther.
Here.
Walterman.
Here.
Merle.
Here. Boy, seven for seven. That's the first time that's happened in awhile. I've been traveling too much. At this point in the meeting, we have opportunity for approval of the minutes from the April 2nd regular council meeting and the April 16th work session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes from April 2nd regular council meeting and the work session of April 16th as presented.
Second.
If there's no discussion, all in favor of the minutes approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? They'll stand as approved. At this point in the meeting, we have an opportunity for residents to address council. It's time for you all to come up, say your piece. We've got three minutes.
My name is Thad Willard. I live at Damon Road. Topic that I have tonight was the zoning code that was recently passed. I know that's the last word you want to hear about zoning, but there's still some issues I think that should be looked at in the relatively near future, particularly in your village center designation. You only call on your zoning for a 10-foot buffer between construction or buildings in that village center and adjoining property. And since you now have OLR property and the white building now zoned for village center, you have R1 and R2 adjacent property to both of those plots. I think mostly R2 as far as OLR and as far as the white building, you have R1 and a lot of R2. Now, I don't think anyone, either in R1 or R2, would want potential of a 40-foot-high building within 10-foot of their lot line. So I respectfully suggest you review your ordinance and perhaps put a buffer in there of maybe 40 or 50 feet from any R1 or R2 zoned property. Otherwise, we're looking at a problem and potential slum condition because no one's gonna buy property or want to rent property next to an edifice that's 44-foot-high right next to them. And you cut out sunlight and all kinds of problems there. So I think it's just a question of common sense and I think that, you know, so much in that zoning ordinance, it may have just been overlooked. But it's something that would help, A, sell the property since you are gonna have a village center designation. The idea is to make it more commercially available and saleable. The fact that you would have a buffer zone would make it more palatable to the neighbors and I think you might want to really consider that. You also may want to consider the motion that was failed for lack of a second last time, making the 80 percent demarcation the point where a non-conforming use can be reused. Because on your current zoning, if you read it, on your current zoning, if you're more than 60 percent destroyed beyond the restoration value, your non-conforming use ceased to exist and you have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and perhaps the Planning Commission to get permission to build on your lot thanks to the zoning's now non-conforming. And we've got a lot of non-conforming lots, particularly in the older section in Green Hills. I don't think it was the intent of anyone to create a problem there, but the problem is there. And I would think you might want to look at that because there's a decent rationale behind that. I think you have an insurance man on your panel and I think at least historically, basements were considered at least 20 percent of the property. So if you put a cutoff of 80 percent, you probably cover most of the property in the Green Hills except for those that just have a crawl space. And I'm sorry, you can't save everybody, but just a question of common sense.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Is anyone else? Moving along, reports of village officials, municipal manager, Ms. Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I will hold comments on the legislation until we get to the point of discussing our legislation, if that's okay with everybody. Typically, I start with our monthly records requests. I've had two this month. One was a walk-in who requested all police activity pertaining to the address of 364 Ingram from the period of August 3rd, 2012, to April 29th of 2013. I received another one from Pat Andwine requesting the 2013 permit issued to the ice cream truck vendor. So, now, four other items that I want to report. A couple times I've mentioned the Malloy's parking lot and the estimate that we had, which was in the neighborhood of $150,000. I'm pleased to report, because of some drainage issues that we had dealt with at Malloy's, which seems to have worked, we were able to lower that bid and we are now around $117,000. So I would like, unless anybody objects, to go ahead and have our engineer proceed with the drawings that we would need to put that out to bid and try to get that job done this summer.
What does that, what area does that include?
It includes the big parking lot that's used by the banquet hall, the big shelter, the golf course, the new playground, you know, it's swimming pool, it's pretty widely viewed.
So it doesn't include the drive to?
Not the drive back, but it includes, can you picture where, like, the island? There's a, and it kind of comes together. It'll start just a little back.
Yeah, it really does need it, too.
Yeah, I mean, given the reinvigoration of Malloy's and the golf course, I think it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our costs will only go up.
Who wish that was not too up.
And the playground.
Yes.
Let's figure that out. Just one question though, are there any potholes on that drive on the way back or anything that could be addressed as well? I thought there were some.
We'll probably try to do that, yeah.
Okay, 'cause it just seems like.
I think it was last year when we tried to, well, maybe it was already there before, but I think it was last year when there were a couple serious ones that we did address, but there were still others. So if we can fit that in, we'll certainly do that. And I know we have some deeper repairs to do in the parking lot as well to make that better. It should look great.
Is that Fund 2011, street and road maintenance repair, is that the?
No, actually, this will have to be out of general fund because we can only use that for streets.
Okay. Good, it's not a dedicated.
Is it street? Correct. Okay, you know, also, I just want to mention, not that he has anything at all to do with that particular project, but the state bid, we have talked about the $25,000 threshold that's typical for have to go to bid. That has increased and in fact, it increased as of last September and it has now been raised to $50,000. So just want to let everybody know about that. We have a couple of storm sewer issues that have popped up that we're gonna address. Don't expect them to be real costly, but you might see some work going on. One's actually behind the shopping center, the one closest to the driveway, closest to the Bearcat, old Bearcat. We believe that storm sewer has probably collapsed there. Before we fix some potholes, we didn't think we should spend any more money filling potholes until we address the sewer that's underneath there. And then we had a little collapse up on Spoils Lane as well. So we'll be dealing with both of those. Our arborist is gonna be down tomorrow and give our service department a refresher on pruning. So they'll be doing some indoor training and then they'll be going out in the field to actually be doing some pruning on some of our trees. So if you see that going on, that's what's going on with that. And in the way of our trees, we are also, the advertisement will start this week for our 2013 removals and pruning, pruning that's too high for our service or it's in the wires. We also have some stump removal. It's a pretty comprehensive list that we have now. So if people are seeing the dots, the red dots signify removal. The yellow dots signify some kind of pruning that'll go on, on those trees. Let's see, our pool is gonna open on May 25th and we're already doing pretty good in the membership category and the covers off the pool. The pool was just washed. We're gonna be doing a little bit of caulking and then they'll be filling it. It'll be filled by next week, so it's great to see that already. It's been a long winter. I wanted to let you know that our healthcare renewal process has just started. We start with something called EZ Apps. It's an online where all the employees who are part of our program have to update their medical information for that bid and that's the one I keep telling you, that'll be, that's the one, it'll just have to be an emergency. They start at this point, once the EZ Apps come in and they put it out to bid. They have to wait for those responses to come back, but nobody will respond within a certain period of the renewal date. And our renewal date is August 1st, so I'll keep you updated on that, but I want to let you know it started. I also wanted to let the public know, as well as council, that several months ago now, I started putting our council packets, actually on the front page. I do two different ones, one for our actual council meetings like tonight and then one for the work session, so that, you know, can be clear. But if anybody is wanting to access that, they can certainly do it through the website now, front page. Just look for the header that's about the packet and click on that. If for some reason people don't have the internet, usually by Monday morning, because we can work late sometimes on Friday, can't always promise it on Friday, but Monday morning, they could even come here and get a copy if it was necessary to do so. So I wanted to let everybody know about that. Also wanted to mention, this past month, we had the Tree City USA function. It was absolutely awesome. I just have, there's so many people I could thank. I certainly want to thank Jeff Holter, the beautiful job he did on the poster and the program and many of the different elements of that. My staff just did a great job, lots of volunteers, Amy Merle, thank her, she was terrific. And I also have to thank the service department. You know, leading up to that event, there were so many major things, but to the public, they may not have even been that visible, that those guys did and they did it well and they did a great job with it and I have to thank them too for that. So thanks, everybody. I think it was the event we were hoping it would be.
Sponsors were really cold through.
Yeah, they did. We had great sponsors, so that was really helpful. But I think, I think that's it for now. I'll have more when we do legislation.
All right. Any questions for the manager?
I just want to comment. I went to the Hamilton County Municipal League and many of the neighboring CD villages, et cetera, that were here for the Tree City USA were there. And they recognized me and they complimented the whole event, how beautiful that venue was and they had no clue that we had it there. And they agree with me that it looked like having a miniature Crone Conservatory that day in there.
That's nice.
So they highly complimented you and many of them knew you and said, "What a great job you did for that particular event."
Great, thank you.
And I concur with that. Thank you so much. And I also wanted to ask you, what would you have a firm contract for the health insurance for our staff?
That is the one I would anticipate bringing to council in July.
In July, with a firm amount, the final amount. And would that also have some kind of assurance that it's going to be good for a full year in spite of any changes that may happen on January the 1st?
Yes, a renewal is for a year, correct.
And will not waver from that unless there's a very emergency, a mandate from the president in that case?
Right. In fact, our consultant, we use Haran Associates for our healthcare and.
Unfamiliar with them.
They feel will be probably, first, we're a small group and I guess the focus right now is on the larger groups. So that'll be one factor that spares us, hopefully. And yes, because we fall on that unusual cycle, we.
So you will not anticipate the major changes then, except for a year from that July?
Possibly. Yeah, I mean, even then, the last two years since I've, you know, since I've been here, each time, we've expected like 25 to 30. The first year, we had two, the next year, we had a four. So we have just been very lucky for that. But no, we would be good for a year. Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, no further questions. Law director, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just give you my brief House Bill 5 update on municipal income tax reform. Still in Ways and Means Committee with, I believe, additional hearings are still scheduled. So still in committee in the House, hasn't gotten anywhere.
Is there, if it should come out of committee and get passed by the House, then it would be taken up by the Senate? And is there any activity or hearings on the Senate side right now?
No, sometimes, not that I'm aware of. Sometimes if a bill is introduced in one side, they'll introduce a companion bill and so it can kind of go at the same time and then when it gets to the end, they merge them together. But I haven't seen any activity in the Senate, it's all in the House.
And if nothing is passed by the end of this calendar year, then they start the whole thing all over again, correct?
Yes, it would, yeah.
That would be a wonderful thing.
Like many bills that don't get anywhere during that current General Assembly, it would be, in theory, it could be reintroduced.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions for the law director?
I do. Mr. Forbes, I have three separate questions for you. Number one, in ray of the emotion that I did not get a second of, I ask and see how can that be brought back or any other things because certain group of neighbors have asked about different things. I want to know, how is the procedure, the protocol to follow in order to bring a motion? As I understand that I cannot bring a motion here to council, I have to bring it to the Planning Commission because they're the ones that have that power because of the zoning document we already have passed it here. Is that correct?
You're talking about your motion to?
Any future motion having to do with the zoning.
To amend the zoning?
To amend the zoning, correct.
Right, it has to go to Planning Commission, just like any, just like the process for this major amendment or revision? Just like any other revision to the zoning that starts at Planning.
How would you advise me to follow through on that? Because since I had on my calendar that we have the Planning Commission meetings the third Wednesday of the month, I was hoping to bring something in this third Wednesday of the month and there wasn't one. I was able to, was lucky enough to get in contact with the chairperson and I was advised, no, there wasn't being one. Also, my experience in that situation, in that Planning Commission meeting, they are not open for discussion. So what would be my protocol to bring a motion to the Planning Commission without speaking to them?
Well, I'll back up. Because now that you have the new zoning code in place, it has its, what I was talking about before was the amendment process for your old zoning code. But now you have a new zoning code in place that has its own amendment procedures, although it's, I'll have to double check, but I believe it's the same process. Generally speaking, zoning code amendments can be initiated on Planning Commission's own initiative or by a council. It can be initiated at the council level. And if council decides to initiate a zoning code amendment, then that can be referred to Planning Commission for them to take it up.
Does that mean all of council has to be in agreement?
Yes, generally, I'm gonna double check for you, but generally, yes. One council member cannot initiate a zoning code change.
How many council members do you need for that?
A majority.
A majority. How does the procedure goes? We first discuss it here and then it gets to the Planning Commission? Because it doesn't seem as simple as it was discussed to be when we passed the vote on that. It seems a little bit more involved.
Well, it is because what was happening at the time was the process for this council to be adopting a recommendation from Planning Commission. And there's a, and it was permitted during that time where you could modify the recommendation from Planning Commission.
Okay, so let's say that in June, in the meeting of council of June, I would like to start a process for some kind of amendment on the zoning, a particular part of it. Do I bring here as a motion or what do I do for that?
I'm gonna have to look at what your new zoning code.
Okay.
And I can send a communication out to the manager and all of council, but.
I would appreciate that immensely then because I would like to know step one, two, three from there.
I will do that.
Okay, and then from here, once the consensus has been arrived, then who takes it to the Planning Commission? Which member, how many members of council?
No members.
No members of council.
No one from council does. If council decides to initiate a zoning code amendment, and again, I'm gonna refer to what the process is and then I'll communicate that to everyone. But if council, by whatever that process is, decides to initiate, in essence, it's, the clerk would just send notice to the Planning Commission that says council has desires to initiate this planning, this zoning code amendment. Planning Commission, take it up.
Okay, so I'll wait for your email because there's three different ones that I'm looking at. Second, I briefly talked to Senator Seitz and read to the Senate bill about the executive meeting and he doesn't think that that's going to go anywhere because there's only one person interested in that. What are your findings on that?
Since I mentioned it, that that bill is introduced, I haven't seen any further activity on it. So I would probably agree with Senator Seitz that it probably won't get anywhere.
Okay, and on the hearings or meetings that there are, I know that there were at the state level, there were two meetings, one on Tuesday at 1:00, having to do with House Bill 5. One on Tuesday at 1:00 in room 313 and one tomorrow, Wednesday, at 3:00 and there's going to be two more next week. Is there anybody from your firm or anybody from the Hamilton County League, anybody that you know going to be present to have their own peace of mind set?
I don't know who, I mean, I will not, I will not be attending those hearings and I don't know if the Ohio Municipal League, they've been at a number of the hearings already. I don't, I can't tell you who would be at the one tomorrow or any future ones.
Okay, Senator Seitz indicated that whenever it gets to the Senate, that he was, his intention that no, the state would not collect local taxes at that point. He would be very much against the House Bill 5 as it is. And I had a brief meeting with Connie Pillage and she also was of the impression that the executive session, Senate bill was not going to pass. So it seems like, everybody seems very comfortable with that. Although at the Hamilton County Municipal League meeting, everybody was extremely upset about the House Bill 5. They were representatives from all the Hamilton County League, so also from Warren County. We had representatives there, was Senator Seitz there, was D. House, was, I mean, everybody was hearing what people were saying, but no one made a commitment. What is your take on that?
Well, I know that the Ohio Municipal League is, has appeared and given opponent testimony. I know, for example, the city manager of one of the other cities that I represent in Warren County has appeared and given testimony against it. I can't speak for the Hamilton County Municipal League.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anything else for the law director? Hearing nothing. Clerk, Ms. Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance numbers 2013, 04CD, 05CD, 09F, and 10TNS and the April 2013 community calendar were posted as required. Additionally, I attended the National Association of Parliamentarians District 4 Conference on April 12th through the 14th in Alseb, Illinois. The focus on the training and education was specifically in the areas of role of the president, effective communications, members in debate, 21st century technology in voting, and governing documents. It was a very, very worthwhile meeting to attend. And notice of the primary elections on May 7th today was posted as required at all of the posting places. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
Thank you, ma'am, and again, thank you for all your hard work and taking your time and treasure to, you know, to attend all these conferences that you do and increase your skills and value to our community. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Don't see a representative from the police department, but I do see the fire chief.
I'm here.
Chief Spath, report to us, please.
I think you and I are busy people.
We have been.
I do have a report this evening. First, the statistics for the month of April. We had 56 total details for the month. EMS runs, we had 33 in the village, two in Springfield Township Contract Area for a total of 35. On fire, we had a total of 21 fire runs, nine in the village, six in the city of Forest Park, three in Mount Healthy, two in North College Hill and in Ronan Colrain Township. And we are at 206 runs year-to-date, so we're keeping busy. Congratulations to two of our probationary members who have successfully completed and passed their EMT test, which is no easy task. Eric Tricase and Brad Harden have passed all the testing, so they're waiting for their cards and they're anxious to make a lot of squad runs. We also have accepted Nick Hosfeld from Latina Court as a probationary member, so it's nice to get someone close by. Last night, once a year, we recognize our life members. We invite them to our monthly business meeting and we cater in Montgomery Inn and last night was, I think, the 13th year in a row that we've done this. And I would like to read their names for you. We currently have 13 life members and they are Bill Bear Senior, Steve Brettz, Mick Brown, Kenny Burke, Jerry Canada, Tom Everly, Ken Fierer, Jack Hoffman, Jack Manning, Dave Portman, Ken Workman, Fred Wright, and Terry Jaeger. And those 13 men have combined 285 years of service, of active service to the fire department. And if you throw in their life member time, which counts, it's a whole bunch more, so.
That means they're pretty old then, aren't they?
Well, I don't know.
Experienced, they're like experienced.
There's a couple of them sitting out there, so I want to be respectful to my peers and my childhood heroes, but nevertheless, one of the things that we did last night, and I am wearing it this evening, as you know, the fire department is also celebrating our 75th anniversary. So every member, every life member got one of these shirts and we had a committee of people that redesigned our logo with the 75 in there. And we had a really nice group photo taken last night, which you all can view on Facebook. So we would encourage you to visit our Facebook page and see what we're doing there. But it's an honor and a pleasure to be associated with these guys and it's a great thing. So, and it's really a neat event. And I know they appreciate it and we enjoy doing it. So congratulations to those guys for their service to the community. We have purchased two new AEDs, well, we have ordered two new AEDs through, we received an Ohio Department of Public Safety EMS grant for $4,000. So we are replacing two of our oldest AEDs and they are, that's the Automatic External Defibrillator that we use to bring someone's heart back into rhythm when they have a rhythm that can be brought back. So very important pieces of equipment and expensive, so we're happy to do that. I wanted to take just a moment, and this time of the year in the spring, we seem to get calls and inquiries about recreational fires and open burning and those kinds of things. So we just want to review for everybody. Open burning is prohibited within the limits of the Village of Green Hills. Recreational burning is not. So recreational burning is, according to the Ohio Fire Code, can be utilized in the portable fireplace units that you would buy at a big box store, the little fireplaces, the chimeneas, those are permitted in the Ohio Fire Code. And we do permit those, provided that you're using seasoned firewood and that it's not giving off any offensive smoke. If you're doing that and it is giving off an offensive smoke to a neighbor, then we would ask you to kindly extinguish that. What is not permitted is anything in the ground, a fire pit, a fire ring. A fire pit, a fire ring, bricks that are put together with mortar in a professional fashion, it doesn't matter. If it's in the ground, it's not allowed. Some popularity now is the outdoor kitchens with the patios, and if you get a building permit to build something like that with the flu and so on and so forth, then that is permitted. So that's where we are with open burning, and it's always an awkward situation when someone's trying to enjoy a fire and a neighbor is not enjoying it, and it's awkward for us to have to go and deal with that. So if people just do the right thing and take care of their business in the right fashion, then everyone can have an enjoyable summer. And we're working on right now just a one-page flyer that we will post to the village website and to our website, so that when the ladies in the office get inquiries throughout the day, they could refer them to that. And then, of course, they're always welcome to refer them to me, excuse me, and we'll take care of their concerns on a case-by-case basis. Finally, I would like to report, next Wednesday, the Hamilton County, we're having a regional MCI, Mass Casualty Incident Drill. This is a regional effort that will not only involve Hamilton County, but includes the surrounding counties of Butler, Warren, Clamont, so on and so forth. And this event is going to be held at the Hamilton County Fairgrounds next Wednesday, and we are going to test our mass casualty plan. And we're going to be participating in that. I'll be functioning in one of the command roles in our EMS unit. Our squad will be over there. We're going to attempt to transport 300 patients within an hour. So it's a regional effort. It's going to be an opportunity for us to test our capabilities regionally, because, as you know, an event of that magnitude could not be handled solely by one fire department, even the largest fire department in Hamilton County, which would be the City of Cincinnati. So we're excited to see this plan go into place, and after it's concluded, there'll be a debriefing and evaluation, and we'll see where things went really well, and areas where maybe we are deficient, and so we'll be participating in that, and I'll let you know how that all goes. And I believe that's the end of my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate all y'all's hard work, you know, and congratulations to the life members, and I like the shirt. It's nice.
Yes, it is.
Any questions for the fire department?
Yeah, Chief, I went, my father and I took part of the Baptist Church for the benefit for the fire department and EMTs. Do you have the results of the earnings for that day yet, or not?
I do not have the results of that. I'm glad you asked about that. I should have mentioned that. It was pretty lightly attended, but I don't have any results in, but...
There were the regular vendors there and so forth, and it was a, it was a slow flow, but it was, it was upended.
It was a nice event. Julie Sheets puts that together for us, and she does one heck of a job with doing that, and so we'll see how it goes. So I think, I think we did okay on it. You know, I don't think we're gonna be buying any fire engines with what we earned over there, but every little bit helps.
I also wanted to share with you that during the winter time, I had not seen one of the citizens, and I found out that she had been ill for a while. And her commentary was for the emergency crew that had to take her to the hospital and so forth, how kind it was, and how, even though it was a tremendous stress to have something like that happen, but the fact that it was neighboring EMTs that attended to, that's just reassuring how lucky she was and that you were there to attend. So I wanted to pass that along, sir.
Appreciate that.
We are very, very lucky to have you.
Thank you.
And especially with all the news of burnouts in Butler County and many other places letting go of firemen and EMTs and policemen, we are really very blessed to be here with you.
Well, we are, and it's a collaborative effort, and, you know, we've established a very good relationship with our neighbors, and, you know, when we have an incident of a magnitude, something as simple as a house fire or, you know, a bedroom, you know, we have plenty of people coming to assist us as we go to help them, and, you know, this is how we're making things happen right now, because there's not any one community that has the financial resources to really properly staff their fire and police departments. It's a very well-known fact, and, you know, you pay attention, obviously, to what's going down in the City of Cincinnati and other places, and, you know, we have our challenges just like the paid departments do as well, because we're all, we're all vying for the same pool of potential people.
That's correct.
And as those fire departments continue to increase their part-time staffing, that takes away potential people for us. So, you know, the future is not necessarily the merging of fire departments or fire districts and those kinds of things, which are things that are going on throughout the country. Certainly, the collaboration that we're, that we're doing is really a matter of survival, and this is how we get, this is how we get the job done. And when you call 911, you're calling because you got a problem, and our job is to come and make the problem better. And so that's, that's what we try to, that's what we try to accomplish. So your support and your comments are very well-received, and we appreciate it.
We may not express that often enough, but we're truly blessed.
You guys are great at it, and I, for one, know that we're appreciated by, by the leadership of the Village of Green Hills, and that's, that's key, because without that, we don't, we don't exist, and that would be a horrible, horrible thing.
Indeed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Mayor's report, court receipts. A little behind on this. Let's start with January, just to make sure I've got everything up through the first of the year, to the State of Ohio, $2,141.50, to Hamilton County, $95.50, to the Village of Green Hills, $8,703.40, for a grand total of $10,940.40. February receipts, the State of Ohio, $17,872,5, Hamilton County, $126,75, Village of Green Hills, $7,706, for a total of $9,620. The March court receipts, to the State of Ohio, $2,409.70, Hamilton County, $100.30, the Village of Green Hills, $11,510, for a total of $14,020. Received a letter from Queen City Metro, they are happy to announce that they're doing some short-term service improvements to a number of, number of their routes, in particular the one that will affect, Village of Green Hills affected December 1st, 2013, which is obviously not real close, but they're gonna extend the Route 20 service that goes up and down Wynton Road from downtown to Cobblewood Plaza and Walmart on Wynton, and add weekday and Saturday trips, so there'll be a bus at least every 60 minutes for us. The American Legion is in the process of trying to spruce up their building. They're looking, you know, for some donations of paint and supplies and labor. So, you know, if you've, you're inclined to help, give a call up here to the office, and, you know, we're working on the bill of materials, and obviously, I guess cash would be welcomed by our friends at the Legion. And if you've got time to slop on some paint, I think we'll try to work up a work party for that. We had the Tree City USA event, as the manager mentioned, and this was Green Hills' 28th year, and this was our award that we received for being a Tree City USA for 28 years in a row now. It was a great event, and Yvonne and her staff and crew did a wonderful job. You know, I'd like to thank Nate Torps and Delhi both for their donations of plant material. You know, a lot of it was lent, though Delhi did leave us a lot of pansies after the fact. And it was, it was just great. It was just great, and they, you know, Nate Torps donated five trees that were given away to communities, and it was a great event. And on the following day, I had the pleasure of doing Green Hills Own Arbor Day celebration, so I presented this proclamation for Arbor Day, and it's pretty much an Arbor Day thing, so we've got that, and that was, that was a good event. There were a nice number of folks there. It was a beautiful morning. Two residents, well, former resident Tom Merle and Cobb Devlin, who is a resident, planted the tree for us. It's an Overcup Oak, which is really a nice tree. And there may still be some of those saplings down at the, at the post office? There may, maybe, maybe not. Well, if you stop at the post office, ask, there may be some. So we've got a few of those saplings, so that was a nice thing that we had to give away. And, gosh, I think that's all for my report. If anybody's got any questions, I'll answer them. Otherwise, we'll move to committee reports. Finance and Audit, Mr. Treese, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank my colleagues that filled in for me the last two council meetings that I was unable to attend.
You should just direct it.
Well, some other folks did some things too, so you know who you are. Thank you. Sometimes business requirements of our full-time jobs that actually pay us wages that support our families take precedent, and I had two things that were just out of control, out of my control, so thank you, Jeff, and friends. I want, this has nothing to do with finance and audit, but I've got the microphone, and I just want to congratulate all the Green Hills High School and College graduates that'll be graduating in the next few weeks, from, I know I'm gonna miss somebody, and just forgive me right up front on it, from St. X, from Bacon, from La Salle, from Wynton Woods, from CHCA, from Cincinnati Christian, there's homeschool kids that are graduating. I have no idea where all of them went to college, but you've all worked hard, you've met requirements, and it's a great celebration for you and personal achievement, and so we're all proud of you. And there's, I have a senior in high school, so I've got to see some of the senior things, and these, there are some amazing young people, and I hope they all live in Green Hills for 100 years, because it'll make our community better. We had a finance and audit committee meeting, and I wanted, in April, and I just want to highlight a few of the things from our, from our meeting. We are currently in the biannual audit process, and we have an audit every other year by the State of Ohio or a subcontracted audit firm to do that, and we have always done well with that. I suspect that we will again, and once we have that complete, I will report the findings. Our budget process, for those of us that spend most of our life in private industry, the public budget process seems a little convoluted, but it is what it is, and we must adhere to the law. The 2014 budget needs to be passed by the June council meeting, and we'll have a hearing at that time for the budget. It seems to me it's a little crazy to try and project revenue and expenses in some instances 18 months out, if you're talking about December of 2014, by a June council meeting, but it is, it is our spending plan, it is also our revenue plan. We, the, we are looking at moving some of our village investable funds. Currently, our invested funds in the Star Ohio Fund yield .05%, and there's a possibility that we can move them to the Star Plus Fund, which pays a generous .21%, and if we can get a little bit more out of it, we'll go for that. And I want to report on our tax, income tax revenue. And this is really a difficult format when you hear somebody reading numbers to grasp this, so I'll try to, I tried to simplify this, and if you take the roughly $3 million that we receive in revenue a year, about a third of it comes from the income tax. And in 2012, we collected $1,010,348. So for round numbers, let's say we collected a million bucks. As of May 1st last year, we had collected $287,000. As of May 1st this year, we've collected $414,821. So we're ahead roughly $127,000, which is a pretty significant number. And it's really hard to get behind those numbers and figure out why on the income tax side. I think it's intuitively, I think it's a couple of things. I think our economy is starting to improve. I think that there are some people that may have retired and said, you know, this nest egg isn't gonna make it, and have gone back into the workforce, so there's some additional income there. And I think that the, Rita is doing just an outstanding job of finding people that have made money within the village, whether they be contractors, or residents, or businesses, and making sure that we're getting every dollar. So I think it's a bunch of things, but we are ahead. We're not throwing a party or celebrating quite yet. We don't know whether it's a trend. This would be a reversal of the prior years on income tax revenue. If we, if we continue on this trend line, it would be quite impressive and be very helpful for our future. As I've said often, we have some significant bond payments, and they ramp, they continue to increase up until the year 2016. We have worked to build some fund balances in anticipation of that, and any increase in tax receipts would be helpful to us. So that's kind of my tax, income tax report update. Council has in front of them the May, as of May 1st, the summary through April 30th of all fund receipts, expenditures, and receipts over expenditures, and then the general fund breakout also. And just for the public's sake, our receipts year-to-date are $1,005,46. Our expenditures are $959,000, and I'm rounding these to the nearest thousand, so our receipts over expenditures are $587,000 in the all funds category. And we have some seasonality, we have some big expenditures coming up, but our expenses are below what they were last year. Our revenue is below what it was last year, and that's predominantly the effect of the local government fund that we have talked about, also the effect of the sunset of the death tax. So you have in your packet the funds balances also in the fund summary sheet. All right, so that's the finance committee and the income tax revenue. I just wanted to report to the public, we have two community investment corporations, two CICs as we refer to them as. We call the one the Big CIC and the other one the Little CIC. The Little CIC, the major function of that is Concert on the Commons, and since I brought up Concert on the Commons, that starts very soon.
June 5th.
June 5th. And if you would like to make a donation towards that, that is not taxpayer money that funds that, you can send a check up to the Green Hills CIC, up to the office, and they will gladly accept that.
Just to add on to that, I talked to Jim Miller, and it's been more of a struggle to get the sponsorships. They finally have come in. Would like to thank Wooden Limping is really stepping up to the plate and helping us out. But so, you know, even little donations towards a very fun and good event for our community really do help. And Jim, Jim's a go-getter and has done a fantastic job, so we want to continue to support him as people watch much tighter, you know, what they spend and what they donate towards. Thanks, Glenn.
Sure. Council was invited to the Good Catch event, which happened to be tonight at the stadium. We can only be one place at a time. This is a partnership with the school. It's an event down at the stadium. We just want to acknowledge the folks that, for inviting us to that, so thank you to them. And I believe that concludes my report, although I will have some legislation at the appropriate time.
Why don't you say something about the Academic Sweet 16?
This is very cool. I'm, I love this thing. Wynton Woods High School, as other high schools have started also, Wynton Woods has been doing it for seven years. They acknowledged the 16 top grade point averages of their graduating seniors. And they have a nice ceremony where the kids come in, they go to the podium, they state their name, what colleges they applied to, what they were accepted, and they declare where they intend to go. And then a representative of the college actually comes and shakes their hand and gives them some kind of small gift, whether it be a shirt, a pennant, a hat, a Buckeye necklace if you might be heading to Columbus, or something along those lines. And I am wildly proud of Green Hill students. Out of the 260 kids that are in the graduating class, they acknowledged the 16, and seven out of 16 are residents of 45218 Green Hills. We're quite proud of them. And so their picture, I believe, was in the Journal this week. So, but we're proud of all the students, wherever they go to school and their achievements. But it was, it was kind of cool to be sitting there and say, yeah, seven out of those is coming from right here in our little neighborhood. So it was very nice, very nice.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Treese. Any questions for finance and audit?
I just want to thank you for the answer of the questions that I had. Although I did not get a direct answer with the item in the newspaper that I quoted, and you wanted to know exactly where I had my figures from. And if I accept the fact that Mr. Mayor said that you were the guru of insurance, and I would like to, if, as respectful as it could be, if I were to do research and have any other findings, if I may share them with you, because at this time, the affordable healthcare may not be that affordable. And I know that we are going to be talking about some raises for our very well-deserved employees. And that's what I was asking the question about, the insurance premium, whether or not we are, we are going to be assured that it's going to be for a whole year, and this is not going to put a damper on it. And I am concerned, because all the literature that I have had so far indicates that this affordable healthcare may not be that affordable.
Right.
And I am concerned with the, our staff, that at some point, we will give them a raise, and then it would be kind of cruel to have to add on some kind of imposition of the healthcare situation for them to complement on that. And not only, I think it would be cruel to our employees, but I think it would be bad government. So if I respectfully may research some of that and bring it to your attention of my findings, and if, if that's okay with you. If not, if you would consult with your higher-ups that you have your connection in, how, what are the projections they themselves have in view of this article? This is the second time that I brought this up from the Inquirer newspaper.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me give some people that might be listening a little background on our dialogue back and forth.
Okay.
Because I'm sure they weren't privy to our emails or discussion. Maria had referred, first of all, my expertise is on the property casualty side, not necessarily on the health insurance side, although I am employed by the fifth largest insurance broker in the world, and we are a leader in the, on the healthcare side as well as the property and casualty side. And so some of my comments are from the experts that are employed by my company. Maria had asked me, referred to me in an article that cited 32% increases based on a study of the nation's leading group of financial risk analysts. And the jump of 32% was for individual policies, it wasn't for group policies. So it's a little bit of apples and oranges. I had asked our folks what was a reasonable expectation for increases. And I believe I gave you something in the 10 to 12, 14% range. These are all estimates. The 32%, again, is individual policies, not group policies. It may or may not include people with good experience, bad experience. The overall experience of the group tends to dictate the cost. And we've had good experience with our group, so we've had, we've enjoyed lower-than-average increases. If you take my estimate, if you take your estimate versus my estimate, I think it's about a $14,000 difference, which is less than one-half of 1% of our total budget. I think as a responsible employer, we'll find a way to make sure that we continue to provide health insurance to our employees. And just for the public's, sometimes people that are employed by government entities get a bad rap. Sometimes they deserve it, and sometimes they don't. And I think we're in a season where it's awful easy to pick on and target people that work for public entities, and I think a lot of it is undeserved. And people say, ah, they got the greatest benefits in the world. Well, the 20% of the premium that is charged to us for our employees is paid for by the employees. So to the extent, and we'll talk about raises, but this is a good tie-in, to the extent that we have not given raises, and they have seen small increases in their health insurance in the last few years, their take-home pay has actually gone down. So I think when we get to the raise piece, I'll cover it. But I concur, we want to be responsible, and I don't foresee, nor has the finance committee entertained any thoughts about dropping healthcare coverage for our employees. So, Seth?
There has been, other businesses and areas, and they have been having some talks about this. And that's how, I mean, it's a serious topic.
I concur 100%, but I don't see us having any serious conversation about dropping health coverage for our employees.
Thank you, Mr. Treese.
Sure.
Moving on, Recreation, Cable TV, Mr. Hermes.
I'm second again. This is great. Tree City. You guys didn't say anything about Destiny's. They did a great job with the food. And the desserts were the bomb. I had two or three of them. April 28th was the kickoff of Celebrity Foursome last Sunday. I think somebody sitting at the table is there.
Yeah, I was.
Saw you on YouTube for the 24 minutes. It was Aki, Fred, Tim Tilton, and Charlie, our retired grass cutter.
Groundskeeper.
Groundskeeper, yeah.
Mr. Walterman was there.
Oh, I know Bud was there, but he wasn't a part of that.
Well, it wasn't a foursome.
Wasn't a celebrity foursome.
But he got rained on copiously, you know.
That's right. So the turnout was really great. You know, I just read the email from Joel. And I guess it, he had a lot of, the thing that I really liked about what he, in the email, the membership number is 50% higher than what it was in 2012 right now. And I guess just the Waynesville Church Ladies League and a Thursday night Men's League, they had a really good time and enjoyed themselves. So he's, he's just, thank you very much for all the support and enthusiasm, and, you know, he's got great vibes from everybody. So the golf course looks really great. So I'm pretty excited about what's happening with it right now. Then also, I guess we got, here in the next couple of months, I'm hoping to have my, my vision, playground started and completed before the 4th of July. So I'm getting people lined up, so I'm pretty excited about that. Otherwise than that, that's about it for this past month. And I have a motion to do later on.
All right. Any questions for Recreation?
I just want to concur. The golf course looks great. Took a trip around it in about 30-some strokes, give or take. It looks great, great crew, volunteers. Bud had a nice article in the Journal thanking folks that helped out. And Joel's got a lot of juice.
Yeah, he does. He does.
Good stuff.
I wanted to also thank you for starting the new program that Mr. Walterman and I brought up as to when we were going to introduce any new members of commissions and so forth. And it worked out really well. I wanted to thank you for that. And do we have something pending for the first Thursday of June with the Green Hills Hilltoppers?
I haven't talked to the gal yet.
Okay, I believe there is an open house picnic.
That very well could be.
And if, and anybody that would like to attend, I believe they need to bring a side dish, and they would have.
Do you want me to attend just because I'm that age? Is that what you want me to do? You want me to attend?
I, I go to them, but remember, I'm 29.
Okay.
But I will, I will try to have a good word for you.
Okay.
But I would like to invite anybody listening now that perhaps they should get in touch with, maybe Barb, she's no, no longer the president, but she would have the information
Right.
to inform anybody that would like to attend to the picnic.
I don't even know where the picnic is at.
I believe it's in Wynton Woods by Perky Farms.
Okay.
And any other further information, Mrs. Cobak, would you have any information about that?
Is this in June?
I don't.
Yes, it's coming up. Okay, it's the first Thursday of June.
June 6th, well, yeah.
Perhaps could you find out and let the village manager know? So if anybody wants to find out anything further, they would be able to call the office?
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Community Development, Mr. Halter.
Yes, brief report. I'd like to thank Doug Kohler for his tools, time, and effort in painting the roof of the golf shack. Now it looks like a pro shop, for sure. Really appreciate that. And we're kind of in the inhale mode on, on our group, and more information will be coming next time about Community Day at the pool. June 12th, Flag presenting the flag at the concert. And I will have an ordinance at the proper time.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Community Development? Traffic and Safety, Mr. Walterman.
Mr. Halter, did I, I don't remember. On the first go-around, I forgot to include you and Doug. Because, but did I, did I include you in the article?
Because we were up in the air.
Yeah, I know, but I went back and I put you in. Did I remember to put you in the article? I don't remember.
No, no, you didn't.
Oh, I didn't. I apologize, Doug. I didn't, I forgot you the first go-around, and I said, oh, I forgot Doug and Jeff. And then when I typed it up, my apologies. Doug and Jeff spent two days pressure washing and painting the lid on the, on the caddy shack out there. And it looks great, really turned out good. Yeah, my apologies again. That's why I don't write many articles. I always screw something up.
Yeah, but I spent an hour painting that flagpole.
That's right, you did.
Oh, that's right. I didn't even tell you either.
And then we spent about a half hour.
You weren't even on the forgot list.
Off the bench.
Well, that's the last time I'll thank anybody for anything.
No, it was, it was good, it was good. And I, and I'm, there's a lot to cover, and innocent mistake, no problem.
I apologize. Before I get into the report, I'd like to, Ted, Ted brought up the frontage, and I looked, I happen to have the code here, and I don't want to open up a debate or discussion now, but I just wanted, it's something you might want to look up on page 78 and page 82 on, on the B1 and B2, the front yard and side yards. If it's next to a residence, B1 requires a 30-foot buffer zone, and B2, which is light industrial, requires, I don't want to get into a discussion about it, I just want to let you know, and you can kind of look it up and see if I'm right. And B2 is 50.
The building center designation creates the problem.
Which is B1?
No, it's VC. It's a different thing.
B2?
Completely off the subject, why don't we deal with that?
I was looking in the wrong place. Okay.
The horse is a different color.
All right. Well, as you know, we lost our, our new chief, Jim Schaefer. However, not hardly breaking stride, we're all kind of used to looking for and interviewing fire chiefs, and we're getting pretty good at it.
Police chiefs.
Police chiefs, I'm sorry. Not fire chiefs.
He didn't even hear one in this.
Freudian, Freudian slip. Police chiefs.
I guess I just give a go at trying to run the police.
Well, stick around, you never know.
I got enough to do, thank you.
But Yvonne is all over getting candidates in for, to be interviewed, and we're kind of moving down that process. We're having a meeting, we haven't had a meeting, other than just search committee meetings. We're having a meeting next Wednesday, the 15th, at 3 o'clock. And that'll be one of the items on the agenda to discuss where we are and what's going on, and where we need to go next in that regard. We also lost one of our, this is stuff, I'm bringing this stuff up because Ann wasn't able to make it tonight, so these are things she probably would have brought up. Kevin Williams, we've known that Kevin was, he's one of our policemen, doing a very good job. And he was looking around, and we knew he had, was on the interview list for another department in Woodlawn, which I think is his home base. And he did wind up taking a job down there. So we're gonna try to accelerate the process of getting a replacement for Kevin. There's some testing and some other things have to take place, which we'll, which we'll be addressing. And lastly, just wanted to do what I always do, and remind everybody when you go to renew your licenses, license plates, that you make sure when they hand you the form back that it says Green Hills, because many times, and we've all probably experienced it up here, many times they put the wrong community down there for whatever reason. And just make sure that it says Green Hills, and if it doesn't, point it out to them, and they'll fix it for you. That's my report.
Are there any questions for Traffic and Safety? Hearing none. Service and Streets, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank Yvonne for turning the air on.
How does it feel to go last? I feel weird.
For me, it's all about trees for my brief report, and I'll keep it brief. I also attended the Tree City USA event hosted on the 19th. Again, I Echo was a great event, and thank you for everyone that put that together. You represented the village well. I need to see a lot of people from, from all around the area being there and kind of taking in the village. I also attended the Arbor Day Celebration on April 20th on the Commons, another great event. My daughter even won a bird feeder from Wild Birds Unlimited, donated by them. So thank you very much, great event. Then I had two different village residents contact me about tree-related issues. One issue we had resolved, thanks to Yvonne. And the other one will be discussed at the next Tree Commission meeting. And then also, as the manager had mentioned about the trees, I noticed those in front of my house, but with the markings, the red and the yellow, I have a red and yellow in front of my house. So I guess one's coming down, and the other one's gonna be pruned, but watch out for those. And I just think it's, it's neat. I feel the wonderful trees that we have in the village really are one of our biggest assets. Love them, and it's, it's neat to celebrate it, acknowledge it, and hope to nurture this wonderful resource that we have. So remind all, all the residents to take care, a little extra care of their trees this spring and summer. Lastly, I wanted to thank Officer Kevin Williams, as Councilman Walterman mentioned, for his service to our community, and wish him and his family well. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Service and Streets? Hearing none. In our Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Ms. Walter.
On April 4th, I attended the Green Hills Hilltoppers. On April 12th, I did the mentoring for the Global Academy. On the 8th, I talked briefly with Representative Village and Senator Seitz, and we already had gone over the message that they had. For 10, I donated a classical guitarist show for the Global Academy. And they, this particular group of students were totally in awe. And I tried to do something to be the liaison for the school, as well as I am for the Laws and Rules Committee. The liaison, my liaison with the library, I talked to Amy several times. She says that she tries to put notes on the newspaper about the events that are happening in the library. in the library. I attended on 4/19, the Tree City USA, on 4/20, the Arbor Day, and that was incredibly heartwarming to see those young lads digging the hole there and planting the tree. And, you know, it was, we just watched, but they did all that heavy work, and I really would like to thank them for that. On the 4/25, I just happened to have a meeting with the EACC, which is the European Association in Cincinnati, and I put them in contact with either Jeff Halter or with Ms. Kovak. They usually look around for sites to have unique kind of businesses, and in this case it would be French businesses. So I put them in contact with you for a future relationship, perhaps. On 4/27, I attended the Hamilton County Municipal League, and I already had made reference to that. There were a lot, it was packed. There were a lot of people complaining about this House Bill 5, and I think this is a serious matter, which unless it ends up at the year and it goes to rest, I think we will have something to contend with. So I thank Mr. Forbes for keeping us informed on that. On 4/20, I met briefly with the attorney, with the state auditor, David Jaust, and praised him for the standing up to the Governor Kasich and forcing him to turn over the books on the jobs of higher corporation. He said that he did it because he felt it was the right thing to do. Yesterday in the Inquirer, they had a writing that former Justice Cup is one of the advisors for the auditor's office. So that is still in full swing. I wanted to remind you that Laws and Rules met on the 1st of April. All the minutes were sent to Mrs. Lives. The 4/29 meeting was canceled because otherwise it would have been a second meeting. We don't have one at this time in May because the 4th Monday of May falls on Memorial Day. And Mr. Walterman, if you don't think that there is a reason or a need to have one, we can have it any other time, but if you don't think that is anything pressing, Ms. Kovak, that we need to get together, please let us know as soon as possible. If not, the next meeting would be in June. And this concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Under Governmental Affairs? Hearing none. I think it's time to move on to new business. Mr. Halter, I believe you have the first item.
That is correct. I have a first reading of Ordinance Number 2013-11-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Sullenberger Associates regarding Green Hills National Historic Landmark nomination. Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rule reading the ordinance in its entirety and to read the ordinance two times on two separate occasions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rule requiring reading this ordinance in its entirety and reading this ordinance two times on two separate occasions. Is there any discussion on the rule suspension? Hearing none. All in favor of the rule suspension, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none, the rule suspension stands.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Ordinance 2013-11-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Sullenberger Associates regarding Green Hills National Historic Landmark nomination. Mr. Halter, you have the floor.
I think I'll surrender it to Yvonne if you want to recap.
We did have an opportunity to talk about this at work session, at which time I had shared with you the proposal from Beth, who's been working with us on this and many other of our issues related to our historic designation. The process will take about a year and a half, and hope to start it as soon as we can.
And the amount of the contract?
I believe it's estimated to be about $13,500. $13,500.
$13,500. This is something that we've been sort of committed to with our comprehensive plan. This is sort of the best path forward, as far as I can see. Any other discussion?
There's one item that's going to be outside the contract in the fee section where we do the final presentation and in the body of it, I know, I think they kind of like for somebody from the village to accompany the applicant or the person that's done all the paperwork. How will we handle the fees on that? Will we just have like a separate ordinance at the time, or how will we? Because there's going to be, if she has to go up there and make that in person, there's going to be air, you know, flights or gas or something to DC for that.
Well, that's in the mislaid expenses.
No, that's not included in this contract.
The second thing that I suspect we'll have to do is separate.
So we'll just do it when the time comes. Was that deleted because I guess there's no insurance, you're going to have to do that unless you get through all of the first part, I guess, right?
Well, that's the one you're talking where it's not going to, it won't exceed $500?
Yeah, that, I think that's a trip to.
It's services related to the presentation. Earlier, it talks about that presentation.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah, you just mentioned that, I think she was concerned about, you said this is going to be a first reading, but now it's continuing on. Didn't you have a concern about that? I think you were good.
Yes.
Well, he started with the first reading, then he made a rule suspension, suspend the rule requiring two readings on two separate occasions. We voted on that. Everybody voted the affirmative, so then he's moved for the adoption, and it was seconded. So we're discussing whether or not to adopt the ordinance. Right. And if there's no further discussion, the clerk call the roll, please.
Adams?
Aye.
Dreese?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Nay.
Walterman?
Aye.
The ordinance passes? Five to one. All right, Ms. Walther, I believe you're next.
I have a reading for, entitled by title only, the first reading by title only of Ordinance Number 2013-112-LNR, directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit to the electors of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, at the November 5th, 2013 general election amendments to certain sections of the charter of the Village of Green Hills.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Dreese?
I have ordinance authorizing certain increases for full-time village employees. I move to suspend the rule requiring reading the ordinance two times on two separate occasions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rule requiring reading this ordinance two times on two separate occasions. Is there any discussion on the rule suspension?
I was under the impression that this was also a first reading.
It is the first reading, and I move to suspend it reading two times on two separate occasions.
So you're going for the vote now?
If we get that far, yes.
For today's vote?
Any other discussion on the rule suspension? Hearing none. All in favor of suspending the rule requiring reading this ordinance two times on two separate occasions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Since we've got a split vote, I have the clerk call the roll, please.
Adams?
Aye.
Dreese?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Nay.
Walterman?
Aye.
The rule suspension passes by vote five to one.
This time, I will read the ordinance in its entirety. Be it ordained by the council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, that Section 1, that the salaries of the following full-time village positions shall be set at the amounts indicated below. Municipal manager, $86,680. Finance director, $54,080. Service foreman, $46,800. Executive assistant to the manager, $39,187.20. Section 2, all other full-time village positions shall receive 2% increases over their current rate of salary. Section 3, this ordinance and provisions established and ratified herein and adopted hereby shall take effect and be in full force in effect 30 days from and after the date of its final passage and adoption. I move to adopt this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Ordinance 2013-F, an ordinance authorizing certain increases for full-time village employees. Mr. Dreese, you have the floor.
And I promise not to be brief. A few months back, I initiated a conversation with the municipal manager about employee raises. That conversation was initiated because we had some employees that had received no pay increases nor step increases in several years. The initial discussion led to a proposal that was brought to the finance committee. I'd like for you to have a historical and philosophical perspective on the proposed raises that we are considering tonight. We are charged with being good managers of taxpayers' money. If we do not periodically give raises as our budget allows, we will have to replace employees that are meeting or exceeding our expectations because they will leave. That will cause us to incur hiring and training expenses and lose institutional knowledge. Additionally, we may have to hire in at a higher rate if we are not keeping pace with the marketplace cost of labor. We want to be fair with our employees. If we expect them to work hard, give their best, and be fair with us, we must do the same for them. Our employees have gone without raises for an extended period of time. While there have been some promotions and step increases, there have not been cost of living increases. For example, we have two employees, two police officers that have not had an increase since 2009. Our municipal manager has not had a raise since she arrived in November 2010. We are a member of the Center for Local Government. They provide comparative salary information. We have looked at this information for evaluating employee pay. This is not a perfect apples-to-apples evaluation, as job descriptions would vary. Additionally, we only looked at local municipalities that would have similar budgets and demographics as Green Hills, such as Lachlan, North College Hill, Silverton, and Fairfax. We did not consider places like Blue Ash, Indian Hill, or Madeira. Many of us in the private sector have not seen raises in recent years, but that is beginning to change. Just like social security recipients did not see COLA increases in 2009 and 2010, they are now occurring as they received a 3.6% increase in 2011 and a 1.7% increase in 2012. The village finances are stable, and we are meeting budget projections and have made considerations for future years and projections with regard to both revenue and expenses. I asked Yvonne to put together a recommendation for pay increases based on these points in our discussions. The ground rules for the recommendation were to identify pay rate disparities that were most out of line from the comparative data and adjust those people first. Secondly, make recommendations for pay increases for top performers. Third, consider cost of living increases for the entire staff at 2%, 2.5%, and 3%. The proposal needed to include the cost of the three options with the additional benefits expense. She came back with a recommendations for increases based on salary disparity for two positions, one being the executive assistant to the manager and the other being the service foreman. She recommended an additional, I'm sorry, for the, she recommended salary disparity increases for the finance director and the service foreman. She came back with a recommendation for an increase to the executive assistant to the manager of an additional $1,000. Her proposal did not include any increase for herself. At my instruction, I told her to put into this proposal a $1,000 increase in her current pay. While I wish we could do more, the finance committee recommended a 2% increase for all employees. This would be in addition to the four adjustments that I've just discussed. The total cost to our budget, salary, and benefits is $27,968.50. Twenty, and I'll read that number again, $27,968.50 annually, and again, this is on a budget that's slightly over $3 million. Let me remind my peers, we contemplated no raise for any employee who has not been with us for at least one year. We do not have any employees that are currently not meeting their performance expectations that would not deserve a raise, and we have had no decline in services. So as we continue to ask our employees to do more, we have not asked them to do less. There are no raises contemplated at this time for part-time employees. So that is the philosophical background as well as the procedure that took place to review salaries and come up with the proposal that is the legislation in front of you.
All right. Is there any other discussion regarding the ordinance on the table?
I just feel blindsided because I asked twice the question to the village manager and to Mrs. Lives, whether or not we're going to have everything but two readings, and that was the impression I had coming to this table.
Well, it's not up to either one of them. This is a motion that was put forth by finance, and it was, I believe it was discussed at the work session.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're familiar with everything.
And you're a recipient of my comments, and it's up to the person presenting the legislation, whether it's one reading or two readings.
Is there any other discussion? You know, for my two cents, I think the manager's raise is paltry, but certainly well-deserved. Her work has been exemplary the two and a half years she's been here, and I am thrilled we've got, as well as the, you know, the other employees, we've got a great staff here, and they deserve this, this little bit of ketchup. If there's no further discussion?
Well, just to back you up on that, we've all discussed this, and I think we're pretty much in agreement. I don't know where Maria's going to vote, but I think it's well-deserved, that people are doing a nice job. They work hard. Attitude's good. You know, I had some brush pickup this week myself at the house, just a little bit, and I mean, a guy just down there. And, I mean, you know, my daughter lives over in the Springfield Township section, and she says, you know, I'd be willing to pay Green Hills to come over here and pick the stuff up. You know, it's a great thing to have. Sometimes I think we take these things for granted, and these people don't do this for nothing. They should get paid for it. They're doing a good job. They haven't had a raise for a long time, and by gosh, they really deserve it.
Mr. Walterman, I agree with you. It's well-deserved and well-earned. What I was objecting to was the fact that from the studies that we made, I thought that we were under the impression that we were going to have two readings coming to the council for that, to give some time to receive any comments, even though it was not done as an emergency, but perhaps that's why the breakdown in communication occurred. I was under the impression that we were going to try to do two readings for everything that we were going to present in council.
Well, I feel like they should get the raises as soon as possible. That would delay it all for another 30 days, so, you know, I'm happy.
And we talked about it. I feel like we've had ample time to consider. I feel like we've had ample time to consider it as we talked about it previously at the work session. Nothing's changed.
I'd like to mention that, and this came up in the Finance meeting, that not only have people not received raises for quite a while, but taking off on the, I think it was the banquet that you had, Tony. I thought you had an interesting point where you commended the people that have worked so hard, but also throughout the vision of what it's going to take to do things in the future. We're facing more and more challenges. I think more and more is expected of those that work in this community. They face a tremendous amount of pressure. So, I think it's not only past performance, but it's also an expectation of increased efficiency and effectiveness. And I do feel we're moving in that direction and it is well-deserved, in my opinion.
Anything else? Would the clerk call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance, please?
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Nay.
Walterman?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
If the ordinance passes, 5 to 1. Mr. Walterman?
I think Mr. Dries is going to.
Yeah, I've got this one. This is, all right. This is a Finance one. Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution. This is a pickup resolution, existing pickup plan, restated resolution of the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. I move to suspend the rule reading the ordinance in its entirety and reading the ordinance, not just reading its entirety. Because I don't believe we, we don't have to pass this resolution tonight, do we?
If you don't, just read it by title only. We'll have that one.
Oh, okay. I move to suspend the rule reading the.
You don't have to do anything. Just read it, first reading, title only. I mean, we can go on about our business and take it up in June.
I move to.
You don't have to move anything. You just say it's first reading by title.
First reading by title only, pickup resolution, existing pickup plan, restated resolution of the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. See you in June.
All right. First reading by title only.
I got a motion.
All right. Mr. Hermes, I believe you have a motion to present.
Yes, we're really proud to have a new member. I'm asking for your approval of Christine Cardwell, Mrs. Christine Cardwell. She's been living here in the village for over 21 years. Been on the fire department for about seven years. Larry's been on the fire department as well. I've known Larry since he's been a young man. Just good people. She's a stay-at-home mom now. And she really has, she really had a need to be a part of doing something with the village. And I said, well, hey, baby, Rec Commission, we use somebody like you. So, she was all excited. So, that's why I sent out that information referenced for Christine. And just like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Christine Cardwell to the Rec Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the appointment, oh, any discussion, I guess? If anybody wants to make a discussion, have any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Christine.
Thank you.
Calendar pool opens May 25th at noon.
Got our pass.
Work session, May 21st, 7:00 p.m. Traffic and Safety Committee meeting Wednesday, May 15th, 3:00 p.m. Concerts on the Common begin June 5th at 7:00 p.m. And the Hilltop Elders thing is June 6th. We don't know details on time to be announced. Any other items for the calendar?
Design and beautification on June 6th.
D and B, June 6th.
Rec Commission, at 7:00 o'clock.
7:00 p.m. And that's a Thursday. So, I take it you won't be going to the Hilltop Elders meeting?
I will not.
Okay. Very well. And Recreation Commission?
23rd, 7:30.
May 23, 7:30 p.m. Anything else for the calendar?
Thursday nights, golf league.
Yeah, there you go.
July 6th is the Bob Carlson 5K Pioneer Run. Get your shoes on and get running now.
July 6th.
It's a hilly course.
June 12th is the dedication of the flag at the concert on the Common.
12, okay. That's the flag dedication.
On June 12th is the dedication of the flag on.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir!
Sorry. Probably the very most important thing would be the Memorial Day service for our veterans. And, oh boy, if you can't make, if you can make that and don't go, shame on you.
That's always, that's always the thing.
People need to be there.
Yeah, Memorial Day, it'll be May 27th at 10:00 a.m. They may or may not process down from the Legion Hall to the Commons.
We'll get them there one way or the other.
But they will be there and the band will be there and the Legion will be there and I will be there. And we will.
At what time is that?
10:00, 10:00 a.m.
Parade starts at 9:30.
9:30 parade.
We hope. All right. Anything else for the calendar? Well, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If there are no objections, we'll stand adjourned.